Deliberate an Act on Resolution 2015-23, Approval of the May 2015 Financial Report.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening is the financial report as of May 31st. You also should have a copy that you were given right before the meeting. It's the approval of our interim budget. That was sent to me via email today, and then the original is in the mail and is addressed to the mayor. So I wanted to take this opportunity to give you a copy. They've noted the items that we need to submit with the final budget, which is due July 31st. And so it's the standard items, our fourth quarter financial report, the resolution adopting that financial report. And then there were some schedules that we submit with the final budget for insurance and the revised budget recap, which will reflect our ending cash balances as of June 30th. And then also, they've noted a couple changes. We had discussed this with our financial analysts last week. The law enforcement protection fund, the final distribution was released after we did our interim budget, and we had budgeted for $26,000, and they'll actually receive $27,200. So I'll be making that correction. Unfortunately, $20,664 of that is a loan intercept for police vehicles, but that will leave them $6,536 for the training expenses. And then on the debt schedule, the budget does reflect additional principal payments that Raton Water Works will be making on two of their loans. And the original schedule that I had prepared just showed the amount per the amortization schedule and didn't reflect the additional principal payments. So I'll be updating that debt schedule so that it matches with the budget. And those were the only two items that they've indicated we need to make corrections on.
Questions for my clients?
And then, real quick, talking about the final budget and the final budget adjustment, the grants that we have that will have outstanding reimbursements as of June 30th, and I think we talked about this a few months ago, will be, as part of our final budget adjustment, requesting budget adjustments to transfer funds, probably from the general fund, to those outstanding grants. And then we'll rebudget that repayment back to the general fund in our final budget so that when we receive those grant payments, that money will be paid back right away. So, and then that'll ensure that you don't have any negative balances in any funds. So I just wanted to make a note that we will be doing that also.
I do have a question. We received a check from the small city assistance. Is it reflected anyplace?
It's in the general fund.
In the general fund.
So if you're looking at your cash flow report, you'll see that the prior month, actually in April, it was deposited in April, our revenues for the month of April were $997,000 because 600 and some thousand of that was the small cities' assistance.
Yeah, I know the commission has discussed it, but I did discuss it with the city manager that some of that money be moved into a savings account or a-
CD.
Something to set it aside.
Well, and I think we agreed to that, and maybe Mayor Pro-Tim Sagada, I think he went to a training last week where they discussed the small cities' assistance. I think our only concern was until we got a formal determination as to whether or not the amount was correct, there was a possibility we might have to pay some of it back, so-
Has that happened?
Could you-
I was down at the Mali training last week, and we talked about the, Mr. Folgenetti, we talked about the small cities. And he asked the question, how many of you received your checks? And everybody, of course, raised their hand. How many of you were shocked?
Yeah.
And everybody raised their hand. It's because of what they call a compensatory tax fund. And that's basically in line with the oil and gas rates, with all the rigs and stuff coming into the state last year, in the last couple of years. That fund is quite healthy. So, and then everybody's, your small city assistance is based on your per capita, or your gross receipts per capita. Since our per capita is getting smaller and smaller in Raton, unfortunately, our amount that we received was better this year. There's no, he said, "We're not going to take, the state's not going to take it away from you." However, the legislators' eyebrows did raise because there were a couple of communities, the two newer communities in the state, Anthony and Rio, each received over a million dollars in their small city assistance. So that raised the eyebrows of the legislators, of course, and they are looking at, of course, revamping how that's just-
So we're not going to get that again?
So probably not going to get that amount again. But he pretty much assured us that it wasn't going away. You know, that the amount we received, it wasn't a mistake.
It's ours.
It's ours.
And Mayor and Commissioner, we had asked the question because, you know, there has been instances of state tax and REV taking back or rendering repayment of some grocery receipts taxes that were paid to municipalities. And as a matter of fact, there was a case, the town of Eunice had been ordered to pay back something, a couple of million dollars-
Yeah, like four million.
-and had taken the state tax and REV to court. And there was a decision in the Mexico Supreme Court here within the last week or so, and the town of Eunice had prevailed on that. But the change in legislation is that there would be more information available to municipalities. There's some deadlines on that repayment, but that made it a little conservative on something that would seem to be out of line. But I do agree with you on, you know, with that way.
Yeah. Everything beyond what we budgeted.
Well, if I could just add to that, too, I think with the changes that we're making in our banking, we'll be able to, after June 30th, we're going to have to calculate the equitable distribution of our excess funds. So that would probably, you know, those monies would be part of that. So any excess funds for investment would have to be calculated equitably amongst the various banks. So that's going to be kind of step two as part of this change in our banking services. So I mean, we're going to be looking at all of that anyway. But certainly, yeah, we could decide how much of the reserve in general fund you would choose to invest.
At the, Michael, at the two meetings ago, at the financial meeting, when we first were appraised over how much the small cities and where it was going to be placed in the budget, at that time, we agreed that until we found out from the state, the state financial association that, because they were at the time taking it back from some communities, i.e., Santa Rosa, they took back, last year, they took back an overpayment. So that was, and for everybody's information, that was why it was kept in reserve, and I believe we should keep it in reserve.
I would probably suggest maybe contacting the financial people themselves now. I respect Mr. Folgenetti and everything he says, but I would still maybe check with the people that have-
The one that can take it back.
Yeah.
Well, I would feel more comfortable actually having something in writing from DFA or tax and REV.
Well, that was the explanation we received from the league, because-
Yeah, I don't think they've ever taken back small city assistance.
Right.
They've taken back grocery receipts.
And as he stated, next year, in the session, look for some action to be taken, probably, on that.
So, the only thing we have to take into consideration when we choose to invest funds is, we really have to look at our cash flow situation throughout the year because we know that in October and November, when we're waiting for property tax, you know, we do rely on those reserves quite a bit. So if we tie up too much money in investments, then we don't have the cash available. So I mean, but we could certainly invest some of it. And being what interest rates are, we unfortunately don't earn a lot of interest on investments, but not like we used to.
Yeah, but you're putting it aside so it's not easily accessible. That's the whole idea of reserves. Anyway-
Sure, sure.
I have another question. It says, "Less the designated street improvement grocery receipts, $181,252.39." I found in the report you gave us a while ago, Scott, we move those funds or reuse those funds?
Part of what we've spent thus far is monies that we had budgeted as matching funds for the Tiger Drive, yes, Tiger Drive MAP project, which we just completed. So on your previous report, it was 189,000, I think, is what we've had in that available, but we started spending some of it down because of the match towards the Tiger Drive. Now Scott did propose to the commission how to spend those funds.
Which we, I'll report to you on the status of some of those construction projects, but as far as what we had laid out, the only thing we've really worked on, expended funds on so far is Tiger Drive project.
Okay, so those are being, it's being spent down, it's not-
That's the plan. It will go into the next fiscal year, see if we can get that work going. But yeah, we have plans to complete that work this summer.
And we don't transfer it to street improvements because of the reserve? Is that the reason?
What do you mean, transfer it to the-
Get it out of the general fund, because it doesn't belong there.
Well, I would think, you know, by the end of summer, we will have spent it all. So I mean, we could transfer it to the street improvement fund if needed.
That's okay.
But I think we still had some discussions prior to the final budget as far as the projects that the city manager proposed for those monies. I don't think any of that has been determined 100%. So I think we'll work on some of that for the final budget as to where those projects are going to be paid from and what the projects are going to be. So I think we still have some unknowns that we're dealing with on that.
Okay.
So if we go back to the general fund summary, taking into account our 1/12th and the designated street improvement GRT, your available cash is 909,402. You'll see that grocery receipts, unfortunately, we did receive the check last week, leaving us technically at the end of the fiscal year still with a minus 4.138% decrease, which is about $115,000 less of what we budgeted. So-
And I wasn't here for the budget meeting, for the interim budget. Did we decrease our grocery receipts, at least by that 4%?
No.
How we went down some, but it was 2%?
We decreased the non-union employee raise from 2% to 1%. I mean, we made some other adjustments within the budget, but the GRT itself, we did not change that figure.
And what we had talked about is, and I know we've had this discussion many times, but I think that the 4% that we're talking about was probably planning on construction happening during the current fiscal year, and it didn't happen. If you remember, the South Interchange is the big one, that's a $10 million project. It was, bids were taken during the year, and then the bids were rejected and it was rebid. No, actually, I'm wrong. They weren't rejected, they were way over budget, and the state had to go find the money. And they ultimately did award the bid to that little bidder, but that took most of the year. So that is happening in this fiscal year. The project's underway, so it's fairly reliable. And just the amount of that project, it all takes place in city limits. The highway department did reject another bid, which was for the game fence on I-25. They took bids on that during the year, rejected those bids, going out to rebid again. There were a couple of projects like that, that I think the assumption was they're going to get built. They didn't get built. As we've talked about, that can have an impact on this. The one I look at is South Interchange that is under construction, so it really has to get built during the upcoming fiscal year. We can do whatever you want to do with those projections, but that's really where we kind of stayed where we're at.
I think the other thing that we've done real well this year, and you'll see it kind of in my notes below, is as of May, we would be 11/12ths into the current fiscal year, which is 91.6%. Our general fund expenses were below budget at 84.9. So we've tried to work with our departments to delay certain expenses because we've known for quite some time that, I'd say for at least six months, we've had this decline in GRT. So we've tried to minimize some of our expenditures to kind of account for that so that at the end of the year, we're not 115,000 over budget in expenses. So I think we've tried to kind of-
And we appreciate that.
-mitigate it that way.
My only suggestion is, when you budget, it's my philosophy, you only budget for reoccurring revenue, not for major projects. Those come in, you can use them for your capital improvements or whatever. If they don't come in, you don't have a problem.
And I understand the comment, but you know, when we're really tight, I think, and I get the message that the construction is just kind of frosting on the cupcake nuts that we planted. But I think when we have a really tight budget, if we expect that we're going to have that revenue, but we don't plan for that, that's going to make us take other actions on the expense side in the budget that might really affect services. We're down to very basic services and very basic budget. So if that means, you know, a cutback in personnel or something, when we have a pretty reliable thought that we're going to have that revenue, that is maybe a little drastic. But it's, I think, you know, where you wind up in a pretty tight budget.
Well, I think if we look at our cash flow report, I didn't give you the report going all the way back 2001, 2002, but I feel pretty confident that, of course, we're going to end the fiscal year with well over a million dollars in the general fund. We did last year, but probably the last six, seven years before that, I mean, we were probably in the 6, $700,000 range, which is not a comfortable place to be. So, you know, obviously, our number one goal is to increase the reserve as much as possible. And we've talked about, you know, increasing it 2/12ths, which is doable, possibly 3/12ths above the 1/12th requirement. And that's something that DFA is highly encouraging that municipalities do, so.
Yeah, the member, Mr. Carrasco, suggested last week was 3/12ths.
Yeah. And that's, you know, what counties are required to do right now, but I think it's-
But it all has to do with reimbursement. We get reimbursed every month. The county gets reimbursed every three months. That's why they have to have three counties.
Sure, sure. Other than that, was there any other questions regarding our financial report?
Mayor Mattson, commissioners, I'd like to make a comment on the fact, and you know, I've been pushing both Scott and Michael Ann on the two dates of July and September because of, when we were down in the legislature, they, if you don't have, if you don't meet those two dates with our budget, then they're not going to consider us for any type of capital outlay in the next session, so. And kudos to both of them because they have, they have worked and kept with it. So, kudos to you.
I also wanted to report, just in the last few days or last week, we've been in contact with our auditors, and we've received the fully executed agreement from the state auditor's office, and we've actually set dates for them to come in August to begin test work. Some of the test work will begin via phone, possibly in July, doing some phone interviews and things like that. But they would be here the week of August 10th, and then the last week, August 31st through September 4th. And it doesn't look like we're going to need a single audit this year, so that's even a little bit less work than a normal audit.
You don't have to comply with a single audit.
Our federal expenditures will be under $500,000, which is the threshold for a single audit.
Okay.
We still have to talk about multi-motors.
What's that?
We still have to talk about the multi-motor, so we'll see if that triggers.
Not unless you spend a lot of money between now and next Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
So, June 30th, so cut off.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-23, approve of the May 2015 financial report.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the May 2015 financial report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. An Act on Resolution 2015-24, Corporate Authorization to Change Bank Signature Cards.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a resolution to establish the new accounts with our new primary bank, which will be First National Bank of New Mexico. We're on schedule to make this transition as of July 1. And we've listed the various accounts and the new account numbers for those funds. I had mentioned earlier, there is a GRT swimming pool account, and so this would be the best time if we're going to put those funds in a separate account, then we could transfer out of the capital outlay account into that one. And so if those are your wishes, then that's already included in this resolution. And then also the resolution, we do have separate signatories for the municipal court accounts, so they're listed separately. The only difference is, the judge is added and not the city manager. And then we have, we'll still have a night depository with the deposit bags for that. And then there's also a procedure under item four for petty cash checks as to who's authorized to endorse and take those to the bank.
Is your petty cash an impressed fund?
Meaning, can I-
I mean, $75, and you deposit everything else, and it comes back to $75. That's what impressed fund means.
No, we maintain $150 in our cash drawer, and at the end of the night, they remove those monies.
Anything over $150 then is deposited, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve Resolution 2015-24, Corporate Authorization to Establish Accounts and Bank Signature Cards.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to pass Resolution 2015-24, Corporate Authorization to Change Bank Signature Cards. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Act on Resolution 2015-25, Approval of Revised Purchasing and Procurement Policy. I think that's in front of us now.
Mayor and Commissioner, in 2012, it was November 13th of 2012, the commission approved the procurement and purchasing policy that the city has been following. This is a revision to that policy. And so the past few months, I had become a certified procurement officer and went through the state mandated training. So we've completed that requirement, which was required to, you know, be done prior to July 1. And also part of that process, I went through the existing policy, which is a good policy and a good guide for us to follow and for our employees to follow. But there were several things in here that I think we had probably borrowed a policy from another municipality and probably just needed to update some of the language to fit the city of Raton. There was also some changes in the last couple of years as well. And so I've given you kind of the revised copy so you could see what the changes are, and then I'll give you a cleaned up copy after it's approved. And then anything that was added is in red. On page three, there were some preferences that were added that we do include with all of our bid and RFP packages, and so you're probably familiar with the in-state preferences, veterans preference. And then there's also another one called the State Use Act, and it does apply to services and professional services. And this agency has given the right of first refusal, and so we must go to them anytime we're looking to solicit services and professional services. And it's dealing with individuals with disabilities, and so they have a lot of services they provide statewide. And we've reached out to them, but unfortunately, in our part of the state, I don't think they have too many of their contractors that provide services here, but we still must comply with that. So I've added that to the policy. And then the previous policy had some language in it. I think it was under the definitions of, I apologize, yeah, it was a 5% preference for local vendors. Well, that's probably a good idea during our training with state procurement. It was something that they kind of discouraged us from doing and just recommended that we follow the required state preferences. However, I did make a note in here that something about the local preference, that the city does recognize the value of revenue derived from local business, and that we will, you know, make every attempt to procure goods and services locally whenever possible. So I did change that language. You can see for yourself what the changes are, but like I said, some minor changes. When you're dealing with sole source and emergency purchases, the statute was changed where we now have a mandatory posting that we have to do on our website if you were to do a sole source or an emergency purchase, and so we need to comply with that. Most of it's just minor language changes. We talked a little bit about, the policy already addressed unauthorized purchases. We will be having training with our department heads tomorrow to go over this new policy. Also, July 1st, we are implementing the new in-code purchase order requisition module. So part of the training tomorrow is to go over our staff, how that's all going to work. And so that's, it's going to be a good enhancement to our accounting system because once and for all, we'll be able to track our budget balances in real time. And once a purchase order is issued, it will encumber those funds against that specific line item and that budget. So department heads and myself will know at any given time what their available budget is, with the exception of like reoccurring type monthly expenses like we use for phone and utilities and things like that. But, you know, I'm talking the other line items that our department heads and myself will be able to monitor very closely. And so that'll eliminate overspending in the line items. So, because before, we didn't really have the ability to know an exact dollar figure on all the outstanding POs that we had at any given time. So it's going to be really good. And I know change is hard, but we'll work with our department heads and our city staff. And I think once everybody gets used to it, it'll be a nice enhancement.
If we were to postpone this till the next meeting so that we have time to really go over it, does that affect your training tomorrow?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, we could probably go over a draft of the policy with them during the training. I think the training mainly is to go over the changes that'll go into effect July 1 with the purchase order module, but-
I think we want you to feel good about this-
Yeah.
-and have plenty of time to look at it. And yeah, we can do that. We'll go forward with the training. If there's something in here that gets revised, we'll provide that to the employees.
I agree with Mayor Mattson. Like, I would like, I would like a chance to, since we just received it before the meeting-
Sure.
I would like a chance to go over it.
And I anticipate that we'll have multiple meetings with our department heads, and we're already, you know, have monthly scheduled meetings with the city managers. I mean, this is going to be an ongoing thing.
Well, they may have something, the department heads may have some.
Yeah, so if there's any revisions that come out of our training tomorrow- Yeah, so if there's any revisions that come out of our training tomorrow, that would probably give us an opportunity to still make revisions prior to the final approval by the commission. So yeah, I'm okay with that. And then if the commission has suggestions or questions, we could address that prior to the next meeting and approve it July, when's our, July 14th? Or we even have a special meeting next week, but I don't know if that's enough time, if you would want it on that agenda for June 30th?
Do we have a June 30th meeting?
Do you guys have a June 30th meeting?
We do. We were going to, we had a special meeting on a liquor license issue that is a pressing matter.
But I think the commission could add additional items to that agenda if needed. So that would be up to you.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this to the next city commission meeting.
The July?
The regular meeting.
We have a motion and a second to postpone action on Resolution 2015-25, approval of revised purchase, purchasing and procurement policy until the next regular commission meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Act on fiscal year 2016, JJAC subcontract agreement between the city of Raton and service organization for youth.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet was actually the request letter that was sent to CYFD along with the copy of the subcontract agreement between the city of Raton and SOI. And then also attached was the scope of work from the actual agreement with CYFD for the J-JAC grant. And then the final page was the actual budget. They've been awarded $128,418 for the next fiscal year. Part of that process is we have to request prior approval to use any subcontractors. Before the meeting, we did receive an email from CYFD with a copy of their approval of our request. So you should have a copy of, did you give that to them? Yeah, a copy of that that was emailed to us today. So it has been approved by CYFD. So we're asking the commission this evening to approve the subcontract agreement between the city of Raton and SOI. And they would, they would be providing the services for the girls' circle, boys' council, and restorative justice, as they've done in the past.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the JJAC subcontract agreement between the city of Raton and the service organization for youth. Okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Deliberate an act on lodger's tax board recommendation. Is that this thing?
That's what this is.
Did we talk about it?
We talked about it. And since it was, in the last meeting, since it was the lodger's tax, we requested before we approved it, we requested that he brings the plans of what they're going to do.
Okay.
So that's what this is.
And that was $10,000, if I remember correctly.
I was looking for here a total amount, and there's two different amounts, but I don't see a total of $10,000.
I mean, $10,000 from the lodger's tax.
And Mayor and Commission, I missed the important part of this last lodger's tax meeting. We had somebody in the office, I think Ms. Tricia was there. And if I could ever give you an update of what was discussed with the board at that meeting.
Sure. They did approve these plans, and what they want to do is empty out the remaining balance of the rec fund, and then add a thousand dollars out of the contingency. And they did approve their application to youth.
So their, $11,000 is coming from lodger's tax, is what you're telling me? Is it, do we have a budget on this? Do we know what this is going to cost us in total for all the projects?
I do have that.
And Mayor and Commission, I think, you know, just a reminder, we are talking about lodger's tax dollars. There is the requirement that we use that for promotion of tourism in Raton. And so that's, we have to look at that with, look at this, with that requirement in mind. And we did talk to municipal league about updating our training in regard to the lodger's tax act. And we're trying to set up a visit where representatives would come up to Raton. And we would ask that the commission certainly be present for training on lodger's tax act. I think very important, the lodger's tax advisory board, and stakeholders like the chamber and Main Street and obviously people in the recreation area here. So we'll try to find an appropriate date and time with all of you and try to move along to have that training. It's been a few years since we had that, and I think it's important that we emphasize what the requirements are under statutes of the lodger's tax act.
Okay, the request from Jared at the April 15th lodger's tax board meeting was actually for $12,000. Jared has close to $11,000 left in his budget, and then they voted to take the remainder from the contingency.
So they'd be taking just $1,000 from the contingency?
Right.
Now, I'm confused now.
I am too. I thought it was $10,000 from his line item and another thousand from contingency, which would be $11,000.
I have here that the request was for $12,000, and that that would empty out the remainder of his line item. And then the remaining balance would come from the contingency.
Okay.
It's our understanding that the total is 12.
So he's saying he can do all of this for $12,000?
And, yes.
Okay.
Just make another comment that, you know, I appreciate that we're trying to do things and that, but this is poorly put together.
Yeah, but yeah, I would like to see a budget in where the money's coming from.
You can't tell what we're paying for, what we're doing. They have four different courses on here. They've got one highlighted. I would have liked to have seen a total of the project.
Right.
So we know exactly what we're paying for and what we're getting.
I think we could provide that, Mayor and Commissioners. We could, we could put more details together as far as a matrix on where the costs are going, what the anticipated costs are, where those are coming from.
And at that time too, we can assure that these things all meet the requirements of the lodger's tax.
You know, Commissioners, it's kind of a judgment call. I think that we, you know, it's a pretty broad term, a motion of Raton. We usually would provide you, you know, that narrative out of the act, but that's really a judgment call here at the commission level.
Then it seems that we need to table this, postpone this item D until we get a better...
I'll second that.
Okay, when do you want to postpone it to? Until they provide?
Until he provides us with the better.
Jared was going to be here to talk on his presentation here, and something came up with his family, he had an issue. He called just before I walked in here.
Okay.
What I'm hearing is that you'd like to see black and white breakdown of the costs.
Yeah, and where the money's coming from.
And we will prepare that, Mayor and Commissioner.
He has a couple of quotes in here, but there's no totals and there's.
Right.
We're hearing a thousand dollars from the contingency or is it $2,000?
We'll clarify that.
We have a motion on the floor to postpone item F, deliberate an act on the lodger's tax recommendation. And a second.
Second here.
We have a motion and a second to postpone deliberation on the lodger's tax board recommendation until the, a budget can be provided in, I guess, assurance that we're within regulations? Is that what you asked? Ron? That we're in, that what we're doing is within regulations? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. On LEEDA ordinance.
Mayor and Commission, we've talked about the LEEDA ordinance a couple of times here. It is a revision to an existing ordinance. So that does require that we meet over several meetings and provide opportunity for the public to comment. And if you remember, a couple of meetings back, we did have a discussion, excuse me, that centered on the section 153.35, the Raton Economic Development Board. And in the existing ordinance, and you see that here in black, the revisions, the proposed language revisions are in red, and you see some language crossed out. Currently, the ordinance provides for a Raton Economic Development Board. It does consist of staff that would be representatives from Raton Public Service, Raton Waterworks, the city clerk, the planning director, and the manager. And they really have, seem to have two functions, reviewing and making recommendations to the governing body on applications for assistance for economic development projects, and reviewing and making recommendations on applications for industrial revenue bonds. There was discussion of changing the makeup of that group. I took a crack at changing that based on the discussion. And so the proposed language, as you see here, is that that group would be made up of seven members. And three of those would still be city staff, Raton city manager, the city treasurer, and a representative of Raton Utilities. And so that could be either RPF or Raton Waterworks. And I think the, it depends on what type of project that we're looking at as to how we review that. So there's sometimes, there's a diverse range of projects that we might be looking at. And let's say, for example, that we were looking at a project which involved water bottling in Raton, that's probably going to be the water utility we want included in this. But we did make provision for specialized experience to be included in the discussion as well. But that committee then would consist of, in addition to the three staff members, four community members that are appointed by the mayor and commission. Now, the rest of the ordinance, the rest of the language, remember, there wasn't much discussion on other changes. The other changes are really changes that come from state statute regarding LEEDA. And we would be required to make those changes in order to be eligible for LEEDA funding through the state. The, the changes on the Raton Economic Development Board, excuse me, not required by the state for our participation in LEEDA projects, that's strictly your discretion.
I'll make a motion to approve the LEEDA ordinance.
I'll second.
A motion and a, and a second to approve the LEEDA ordinance. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fortem Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Madsen?
Yes, motion passes.
With that, Mayor and Commission, I would just say that now we're looking for persons to apply for the Economic Development Board. So we would take applications on that as well as other boards.
I don't see any hands going.
And we'll advertise it as such right after the public?
We will. We will get the notification out there. We'd like a good cross-section of the community, so I guess that's really.
Deliberate an act on LEEDA project participation agreement with New Mexico Economic Development Department.
Mayor and Commission, we have requested from the New Mexico Economic Development Department funding under their LEEDA Act and LEEDA funding for construction of, replacement of digital projection and sound equipment at the Schuler Theater, which would allow for digital films to be displayed. And that, that was granted. So the project participation agreement that you have is one of the requirements that we would have in order to go forward with the project and receive the funding. So you see a basic agreement here that details the scope of work, the nature of the project, and that we would basically commit to manage and operate the Schuler and the equipment that would be placed under this, this award. We do have other requirements that we are working on. And I would anticipate that we would take proposals for Schuler Theater management and try to bring those proposals to the commission and get a memorandum of agreement or a memorandum of understanding in place for the, the operation and management of the theater.
I make a motion, Mayor Madsen, that we accept the LEEDA projection, project participation agreement with New Mexico Economic Development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the LEEDA projection participation agreement with New Mexico Economic Development. Basically, the $150,000 that was given to us to digitize equipment at the Schuler Theater. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Fortem Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Madsen?
Yes. An act on an event and street closure, VFW post 1793, Fourth of July, street dance.
Mayor Madsen, Commissioners can appoint a ward. Can we include I, J, K, L, M, and N, I mean, and M, in one approval? They have all put their insurance and the proper permits with the city? Is it a possibility that we could lump item I, J, K, L, and M together?
And if I could interrupt you, Commissioner, or Mayor and Commissioner, make general comments on, we have five events listed on the agenda. We have an extensive process of reviewing the events, as we've talked about previously, with our police department, fire department, ambulance service, public works, which would typically provide traffic control. And we have gone through these at some length, and you see that the persons from those departments that are participated in that review have signed off. So our recommendation is on all five. We're happy that people are scheduling and holding events, and we're prepared for them as far as city of Raton staff.
Did you, did you make that?
I can make it in the form of a motion, in that we combined I, J, K, L, and M, all in one, and approve all four of the events?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve I, J, K, L, and M under one motion. They are as follows. Event and street closure, VFW, Fourth of July, street dance. And they did turn in insurance, correct? Raton Main Street Music on Main at Ripley Park. Fun Walk and Run at Roundhouse Park. Raton Main Street Annual Balloon Rally. And St. Patrick, St. Joseph's Annual Fiesta and Street Closures. Does anyone have any questions on these?
Motion number four.
We've already done that. I don't need a motion to, to go ahead and, and accept all of these.
I made a motion and she said.
You made a motion to combine.
To combine them.
So.
Oh, okay.
And we voted on that. And we gotta make a motion.
To accept, to approve.
I make a motion to approve all five events.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, events, the Fourth of July Street Dance for the VFW, Music on Main Street at Ripley Park, Fun Walk and Run in Roundhouse Park, uh, Raton Main Street Annual Balloon Rally in Saint Joseph's, Saint Patrick, Saint Joseph's Annual Fiesta and Street Closure. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The 2017, 2021 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, Public Hearing.
Mayor and Commission, uh, we do anticipate, uh, an August submittal of our Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, uh, to the state of New Mexico. That is absolutely critical in going forward on many of the avenues for, uh, infrastructure planning. We do plan on having, uh, this public hearing to receive input from the Commission and the public as far as our, setting our priorities for infrastructure capital improvements. And, uh, we would have another ICIP public hearing. Actually, we'll probably have, uh, those throughout July and the first meeting in August, so that we, uh, uh, do have the input. Uh, you do see what we have done in, in the past year, and I'll go over the top five projects, uh, very quickly. We had listed, uh, the number one priority in Raton is constructing a solid waste transfer station and, and recycle center. Um, we did ask for funding through the legislature. This year, we did not receive any funding for that project. Um, we have part of the funding, and I think, in response to that lack of funding through the legislature, we would probably propose to build part of a project. Uh, we do need to have a more permanent, more efficient transfer station, and I think we would like to, to, uh, propose to you that we would, uh, proceed during this next year, uh, with the basic facility for transfer, probably keep the recycle facility in the RMX building where it's at. Um, the, the, the difference between that building and the, the proposed recycle center would be to gain efficiency and be able to do that with, uh, fewer personnel.
Correct.
So, so right now, we would have, uh, maybe several people, and we did today at the recycle center. They were baling cardboard today, uh, getting ready for the public day. Uh, and in addition, we had four people working at the transfer station. So we had a, a lot, a lot of manpower, uh, working on both. If we built the facility as proposed, we would plan on performing both functions in three people.
Right.
So it's an efficiency gain that we're aiming at. We don't have enough money to, to really build a full facility. We would, uh, come to you at a later time and propose building a, a portion of the facility, and then the decision has to be made, is that still, uh, you know, going after funding to add on to that and, uh, building the additional part, is that still our priority going forward? So we're looking for feedback from the Commission and the public again. Uh, definitely, uh, Lake Malloya improvements have to be a, a, a priority. Uh, currently, uh, Raton Waterworks is looking at, uh, they're taking cost proposals for, uh, the video inspection of outlet works, uh, on the outlet piping. Uh, that's a very challenging project, uh, but we do anticipate going forward, we would try to rehabilitate, uh, at least several of those outlet conduits. There's one conduit that, uh, is in poor condition, we probably can't rehabilitate, and so we would have to have some resolution of that. That means filling that with a concrete drought. Um, later on, we have to address spillway capacity. So some big issues at, at Lake Malloya that are going to keep that pretty high on the list in, in future years. By the way, we do have a capital outlay that's funding, uh, that, that effort to, uh, inspect the interior of these conduits, uh, currently that we're operating with. You see, street reconstruction at number three on the list. Um, Mayor and Commission, just back of the napkin estimate, I think we could, uh, really have, uh, the streets and, and drainage facilities in a condition that, uh, we would be happy with if we had about $50 million. And so, uh, what we've said is we, from our gas tax, we generate on the order of $140,000 a year, uh, and, and we try to leverage that, uh, with grant money or go to the legislature for money, but we're falling far short of the money we really need. So we try to prioritize and hit the, uh, the highest priorities as soon as we can. Uh, but, street construction will be there also. Not, not going to be off the list.
In the funding to date, does that include the $150,000 that we just received?
What, what we would look at is going forward. So, uh, you see some large numbers. We'd like to receive a million dollars a year. We really don't have an expectation that, uh, we're going to be able to access a million dollars a year. Uh, some of the avenues are, uh, the local government road fund through DOT. We've talked about co-op and MAP projects, uh, pretty frequently here. Uh, legislature, we did go to legislature and we did receive some funding, we'll talk about that, uh, in a minute. CDBG, uh, again, fund, uh, infrastructure, so either drainage or street reconstruction, uh, CDBG, that's another thing we'll talk about. You, you can go there, but realistically, um, if we have a very successful year, we're doing half a million dollars to maybe a million dollars of, of street improvements a year, or combined with drainage improvements. So drainage improvements immediately below that. And then, uh, medical response unit, that's an ambulance. And because we have, uh, we're in the business of transfers, meaning that we take patients to places like Santa Fe, Albuquerque, Pueblo, Colorado Springs, um, we are continuously putting a lot of wear and tear on our ambulance. Uh, so that's probably another item that generally is pretty high on the list that we're, we're talking about or needing to replace, uh, a, a city ambulance. So you see that, and then you can go on, uh, down the list there and look at the priorities. But, uh, we are looking for feedback between now and August when we finalize this plan.
Is this published someplace besides a copy that you get here?
Mayor, I, I do not know if it's there now, but I believe we could get it up on the website that, that would make it available to the public, so.
Could have, you know, something to look at?
Yep.
It's on VR plans website there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Marty.
Is there anyone that would like to address the Commission on this plan?
I was kind of wondering if, if, about the guardrails. About six months ago, I was asking for guardrails at Lake Malloya. Did, did you ever send any requests with the state?
We have not, uh, that, that highway there is a DOT, uh, road. We haven't sent a request to them, uh, we can, we can bring up that that's, that's come up with them, but, uh, it's, it's really a, I think, a safety determination on their part, so.
I think they'd agree with it once they send it, well, somebody else to look at it, because that's quite a drop off the dam.
Yeah, it could be. Yep.
Sure.
This is our second public hearing?
It is, Mayor.
And we need, is that it too?
There's not really a requirement, uh, we just would, uh, we'd like to have two additional ones. There is a requirement for a hearing on CDBG. So we would, we have scheduled that, we would try to conduct CDBG public hearings. Uh, there is a requirement for those. There really is not a requirement for the ICIP, uh, so, uh, but we, we have some time to talk about it, and we are, uh, trying to clean up the list. As we said, if you go down the list, seems to be some duplication of some items. Uh, we do need to clean it up and do some work on it. But I would think about going to the legislature next year, thirty day session, of what you would like to, uh, carry to the legislature next time we go.
And this, uh, particular plan, a proposed plan, is extremely important because if it isn't on here, you can't get funded, no matter how great your project is.
And Mayor, I would say that's true with the Community Development Block Grant Program too. We would want to ultimately identify that project in a very prominent, you know, high priority, uh, spot on our list.
Okay. Uh, there isn't anything else we need to do on that, is there?
There's not, Mayor. Uh, just to reiterate, we are looking for, you know, feedback from the public, uh, their comments, uh, and, and give the Commission thinking about, uh, you know, what you would, uh, see as a priority going forward into next year.
And, uh, as Mr. Mayfield said, this particular list can be found on KRTN's website. All right. Deliberate an act on authorization on legislative capital outlay funds for Tiger Grant repaving project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, um, the, uh, New Mexico Legislature, as far as their capital outlay bill, uh, they did not get it done during the regular session, and they've been back and forth on, uh, maybe bringing that up under a special session, and, uh, we've sent you information that it looked like it was going to happen, and then it wasn't going to happen, and it looked like it would happen. Well, uh, the, the legislature did meet one day, special session, and they did pass the, uh, capital outlay bill, and I think that I had sent you all this on email, uh, that, that bill then went to the governor, and if you look at that, uh, she had vetoed, uh, some items, the power of line item vetoed. But, uh, the important part is there was a, uh, a, a capital outlay appropriation made to the city of Raton for street improvements in the amount of $150,000.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. It, is that included in this?
It really is not reflective of that number.
Okay.
Uh, the, the ICIP just says from any source, we, we'd like to do that much work. It, it really is not.
Yeah. Well, that first, first column is funded to date, and that's why I wondered if it was included in the $250,000 that was there.
It really is. That number was kind of carried over from something previous. It really doesn't reflect this $150,000. Now, what I would like to propose to the Commission, uh, is to look at the Tiger Drive project, and I'd like to report to you that, um, we, we have not completed, uh, the work on Tiger Drive. There are pavement markings that need to be made, but the, uh, repaving has been completed on the west side of Tiger Drive. And it, those of you that have driven on Tiger Drive, uh, where the project stopped was really the amount of money that was available for that project, primarily funded through the municipal arterial program. Um, and in addition, that's where, uh, railroad property begins. So we have two issues now with the uncompleted part, uh, east of, uh, on the east part of Tiger Drive. We've done some, uh, uh, pretty quick estimating, and, uh, we think that we would need this $150,000, and that's what we would like to pro- propose to you tonight, is that we take our capital outlay in the amount of $150,000 plus next year's, uh, co-op agreement, uh, to complete all of Tiger Drive. And so this, the, the two issues there are, uh, number one, timing. We have two grant agreements that we have to pull together, go through whatever process there is, and as far as getting the work done before, uh, school convenes, uh, that's going to be tough to do. We might be able to make that if we really move forward, but, and ideally, we would do that, uh, but it may happen, the work might happen after school starts as well. But we have notified, uh, staff in, in regard to this capital outlay, that we would like to be included in the first bond sale, to have those funds available as soon as possible. Now, when you do that, uh, you really need to be ready to go, because they don't like to sell the bonds and then have those, that, those funds sitting there. So we've told them to proceed along, and, and we may be one of the only ones in the state that are in that first bond sale, but, uh, we've told them that's what we would like. And we'd like you to think about, uh, committing that to the Tiger Drive project. The second issue is, uh, because there is a wide, uh, right-of-way owned by BNSF, and there, there are active, uh, passenger train operations there, we would need to meet with BNSF, and they have some requirements for us as well. So we'll have to find out what those requirements are, and, and we'll have to meet them. So that's, uh, makes the project a little more challenging. Now, I would tell you as well, that just before I came into the meeting, I did get notification that we, uh, were awarded cooperative agreement funds in our current application. That was an application that was put forward by Jason Phillips of our office. And, uh, let me find that amount. The total amount is $62,000, $62,004 for, uh, that grant. We'll bring that grant agreement to you at the next meeting. We just received it in the mail today, but we would ask you to put that money towards Tiger Drive project as well, and we feel like we could complete Tiger Drive with those two sources of funds, plus our match.
Yeah. And you really think we're going to get the $150,000 that, that quickly?
Mayor, I, I, I'm just not sure, no.
Because usually it takes three years before you actually see the money come through that the legislature passed.
We, we had contact with the, the staff very quickly on this, and they indicated that the bond sale could happen.
Could happen.
Pretty quickly.
Okay.
Uh, but we do have to go through, uh, DOT environmental process on this, and as far as getting everything in line with the railroad, um, I would not predict what kind of timeframe there is on that. We'll make contact and find out what their process is.
But at this time, you would like us to, uh, authorize the $150,000 to be used on the Tiger Drive paving project?
My recommendation is that we apply the $150,000 to Tiger Drive project, try to complete it fully, and then we'll come back at the next meeting and recommend that we, uh, use the co-op grant for Tiger Drive as well. Now, you might remember that when we talked about the application, you passed a resolution, we did talk about, uh, Hospital Drive. And Hospital Drive is a good project, necessary project. We applied for two grants, co-op grant, that's the smaller one of the grants, and this is $62,000, but we applied for the municipal arterial grant as well. We were not successful with our MAP project, so as far as Hospital Drive goes, we could do part of that project with this co-op, then we'd have part of Hospital Drive to be completed, part of Hospital, or Tiger Drive to be completed. So, uh, we're going to change our recommendation to you and, and come back the next time and say, let's complete Tiger Drive, let's get that done, and then we'll, uh, address Hospital Drive.
Mayor, I make a motion that we do, authorize the use of the legislative capital outlay funds for the Tiger Drive.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to authorize, uh, the legislative capital outlay funds for the Tiger Drive, Tiger Drive repaving project. We have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fortem Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Madsen?
Yes. Motion passes.
We were provided by Mexico Municipal League, uh, kind of summary of, of bills that were, uh, implemented at the legislature that are in interest to municipalities, a good reference for you, um, things that Municipal League had tracked. We had talked about the Legislative Education Study Committee, uh, our staff, and especially Tricia has worked very hard at, uh, putting together a, a good meeting for the committee. We'll have some staff members in town tomorrow, and then the, uh, the committee will meet on Thursday and Friday. You have an agenda on your desk of the, uh, of the committee. Uh, will be held at Raton High School Gymnasium, basically all day on Thursday and Friday, and, uh, if you're interested, I had, uh, a list of the senators and representatives that are members of the committee. There's 31 members. I expect not all 31 are going to be in Raton, but, uh, very large committee, and, uh, so it's interesting. I'll pass around the list, uh, for you to look at. A pre-bid meeting was held last week on the Lake Malloya Dam Project. That's the inspection of the outlet conduits, uh, that we had talked about. I had attended that. We have several bidders. It really takes a, a qualified contractor to do this type of work, uh, but we would look at, uh, trying to select a, a contractor to do the work, uh, finalize a plan, put that in front of, uh, the state engineer's office, get approval on that, and hopefully perform that, uh, that inspection of the conduits, um, this fall. So that's the plan on Malloya, and we did talk about the, the. So that's the plan on Malloya, and we did talk about the capital outlay from 2014, funding some of that work. I did attend a meeting today. It's in regard to Seagerstrom Creek Restoration. This is an area west of Lake Malloya that was really affected by the track fire. Track fire happened, you know, in June of 2011, four years ago. So mostly watershed rehabilitation is complete. There are some ceiling trees being planted as we're talking, some other minor work, but the Seagerstrom Creek Restoration is the big project that needs to be done. So work like that requires a permit under the Clean Water Act, Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. That legislation is administered by the Army Corps of Engineers. So there were several corps people in town today to go look at the project. That explains the sunburn, but we would again anticipate that we'll have that application in for permit coverage to the corps in July. There is going to be a review by U.S. Fish and Wildlife as well as State Game and Fish in regard to the jumping mouse, and we would anticipate we'll get that done. There has been some conversation on doing that, and then the work will commence in the fall. So what that comes down to is you really can't work in the summertime, that's when the mouse is active, and we would anticipate some winter weather in Sugar Creek and Lake Malloya, so we're not really planning on being able to access the site, you know, once you get into November. So we're really looking at September, October, November to try to complete this work. So we're planning on that. To report to you on the Chip Seal project of the Maxwell South Edition, we had talked about that, and outside of that hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar street funds. We talked to the contractor today. The plan right now is to commence the work on July 6th. On those streets, which are avenues from Ninth Avenue to Fourteenth Avenue, our crew has been out patching and cleaning those streets. We still have a little bit of work to do, but we've made a lot of progress on prepping them for this Chip Seal project. So July 6th is what we're looking at to do that work. And if you remember, there were three contracts under state purchasing agreements that we plan to procure under. We had bid, accepted bids on the Wells Fargo Building, the Art Building on South First Street. That work is scheduled to start on July 6th, so we would plan on three or four weeks of construction on that building. The waterline project is moving along down there. It consists right now of new services on the new waterline main and transferring the meters from the old service to the new service. So a couple more weeks of work on that project, it looks like. I did notify you of our notification of award and our co-op funds, sixty-two thousand dollars. That comes out to forty-six thousand, five hundred and three from DOT, fifteen thousand, five hundred and one dollars is our share. Bids are due on the multimodal center on June 20th. We did hold a pre-bid conference on June 17th. We had three general contractors that looked like they were interested in submitting a bid. We'll accept those bids on June 30th, and we hope to bring a recommendation for award to the commission at that first July meeting. If we do that, we would need concurrence from Federal Highway Administration and then try to proceed along into construction. So hopefully, we're in construction late summer, early fall of the year on the multimodal project.
And was that bid, that was bid not as one huge project, but as separate entities?
Mayor, previously, it was bid as one project with no alternatives, and it was over budget. It was well over budget, and bids were rejected. This time, the bid is for the full project, but there are additive alternates. So we've expressed to the contractor the base work that we want to complete, and if the funding allows, we would add in elements of the project. But the goal is to match the project to the available funding. Arrive at that, leave out the parts that we can't afford, and proceed along with the construction of those parts that we can't afford. So we anticipate coming to you in July awarding and then moving into construction. Does that answer any questions there, Mr. Wimertree? The, I did receive the fifty percent complete plans on the Great Blocks project, and the consultant on that, excuse me, will be in town on Thursday morning, I think at ten-thirty. They'll be here to go over those plans. The word is that looks like it's, their estimate is about a million and a half dollars for construction, and we are going to talk about funding opportunities for that project. Main Street had been in town at the shooter on Friday. I had met with them. They're very interested in coming and meeting with us. They're very dedicated to finding the funds. I think the state is dedicated to funding the project, so we'll see what the possibilities are. I think there are some funding potential through Department of Transportation that we'll be talking about and trying to bring to the commission.
When did you say they're going to be here?
They're going to be here Thursday morning about ten-thirty. We are, Commissioner Jacomo had reported on architect work going on in the library, on the plumbing. We are accepting bids for that currently. We'll take bids up till July 9th, and then we would plan on bringing that bid to you for your award and proceeding along into construction of the plumbing. And if you remember, in the basement, we got some very old piping. We've had a number of leaks, it's old galvanized piping that has a limited life, and it's wrapped in an asbestos material. So the project consists of abating the asbestos material and then replacing that galvanized pipe with a newer pipe. So we're taking bids on that project currently. In regard to the generation project that we've been talking around, talking about, the Zachary engineers were in town last week, and they looked at the Mortzilla unit and generally talking about what parts of that can stay and what parts of that have to be removed. So if there's parts of that building, like the control system or the cooling system that can be reused, they were making that determination. So that project is moving along. I think the thing that's on, oh, let me go over this. Recycling normally would be held the first Saturday of the month in July. That falls on the Fourth of July. So we'd like to announce to the public that we're going to reschedule recycling Saturday to July 11th, the second July of the month. We have a lot of questions on mosquitoes, and so I did want to address the situation on mosquitoes. And we're getting a lot of rain. That's good. I would expect that we will get more rain in July and August, and that's two things, mosquitoes and weeds. So we have heard from a lot of people in regard to the mosquitoes, and Colfax County takes responsibility and has historically for spraying around the communities and throughout the county for controlling mosquitoes. The city is participating. We are a partner with the county in that we buy material, the insecticide that's used within the city of Raton. I've talked to the county about the process, and I think a lot of people have seen the mosquito truck in Raton here in the last couple of nights. So that process is going on currently. It's a wet year, we've got a lot of mosquitoes, but the county is out there spraying for them. Now, one thing I didn't really know before, but we've learned is this spray is not really good for those people that keep bees. And there is a person that came forward and said that he did keep bees, and he would prefer not to have that area sprayed, and we pass that along to the county or to their contractor. So if there are more people that, for whatever reason, would like to withhold that spraying around their house, if they could let us know, we'll pass that along. Or they can call the county, and the county will make an accommodation. But if for any reason, if someone did not want that spray in their area, just let us know. And that's one reason that you might not want it is if you are a beekeeper. So we are participating with the county in that mosquito control, but, you know, property owners, they have a measure of responsibility as far as mosquito control as well, and weed cutting or grass cutting is one of the most important measures that we can do. So we put a lot of emphasis as far as the city crews on trying to control these weeds. They grow pretty fast when it's as wet as it is, as well as the grass. So we throw a lot of resources at the weeds and grass, but I would encourage property owners to try to also keep vegetation mowed. That really helps in mosquito control. It also helps with the appearance of the town, and that's going to be something that we have an issue with throughout the summer. We would like people to do that on a regular basis voluntarily, but we do have code enforcement officials out providing additional encouragement to people to control vegetation. So we'll be very active in trying to contact property owners that need that service. And there are a couple of properties that are owned by people who are not located here, and, you know, we'll have to make some arrangements to get those maintained and mowed. There are people that are just not responsive to our attempt to contact them, so we'll have to probably intervene in some of those situations. But weeds and mosquitoes, that's where we're at, Mayor. Commission, that's what I have.
Mosquitoes, poles. Seeing none, meeting adjourned.